Go ahead and get started. I wanted to call to order the July 22 meeting of the Board of Education. Secretary Noble, could you take attendance?
Everyone is present except for President Hill, who will not be here today.
I will be filling in for President Hill. So could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will move on to item 2A, which is Bloomfield Township Public Safety Millage Renewal. James Gallagher, Police Chief, and John Leroy, Fire Chief.
Good evening. I'm Police Chief Jim Gallagher and-
Fire Chief John Leroy.
We're just here tonight, well, thanks first for having us. We're just here as the absentee ballots and the mail-in ballots start hitting the mailboxes here soon. There is a public safety renewal on the ballot. That renewal is, no additional millages added to it. Bloomfield Township has three millages. Last year, we combined two. We had four. Last year, we combined two. This millage is just another renewal. It's about 9% of our budget, so it equals about $4 million a year. And so that is for both police, fire, all the emergency services we provide, and dispatch. And so we wanted to kind of get the word out that that would be on the ballot. It's not up until 2025, but the reason why we want to put it on 2024 is next year, there is no elections at this time, and the cost to put one of those elections on for just one renewal just really doesn't make financial sense for the township, so.
No. Just wanted to bring everybody's attention to the fact that, so they're not shocked when they get their ballots in the mail and wonder what that is, and we just wanted to make sure everybody kind of has an idea that it's just a renewal, and that's why we're doing it.
We'll take any questions on that, or if you have any general questions for public safety, we're more than happy to answer any of those. Busy week here in the township with the U.S. Junior Amateur, so that's where we're coming from, so.
I've noticed going down Maple Road.
Yes, it's busy. When you add Charlie Woods to things, it changes the dynamics of the tournament quite a bit.
I'm impressed. It's only added about two to three minutes to my commute, so I think that's a testament to how well you guys are managing the area and keeping this under control, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, only two weeks to plan for him is a lot of work.
Yeah, no kidding. Any questions, board members, anything?
No, but I think this sample ballot is available for folks to take a look at if they'd like to see the language that's on in the ballot as well.
That is true.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you. All right. Moving on to item number 3A, Administrative Appointment of Tomarcus Southward, Associate Principal of North Hills Middle School, with Todd Bidlak. Do we do that first? Sorry, Michelle. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to appoint Tomarcus Southward as the Associate Principal of North Hills Middle School, effective date of July 29, 2024.
All right.
Good evening, members of the Board. I am thrilled to introduce you to somebody who you're already pretty familiar with, Mr. Tomarcus Southward, as our recommendation for Associate Principal at North Hills Middle School. Mr. Southward has been with Bloomfield Hills since 2016. I think we even came in at the same year. He came in at the beginning of the year. I think I started at the end of that school year. And he's been serving as a counselor, first at East Hills Middle School, and now North Hills Middle School. In total, he has a combined 22 years of experience in K-12 education dedicated to meeting the diverse needs of all learners. He has been known for being innovative and for creating collaborative environments between students, families, and staff as a school counselor in districts such as Pontiac School District, Oak Park, and now Bloomfield Hills. He played a pivotal role in some major district initiatives, such as when we transitioned the fourth graders. If you remember this, fourth grade came from East Over, over to East Hills, and then playing a similar role as we reconfigured our district this, or just this last fall, when we consolidated from three middle schools to two middle schools, and returned elementary students back to our elementary schools. He holds a bachelor's degree in history and a master's in counseling from Oakland University, and he's currently working on his educational specialist degree in education from Oakland University as well. During his career, he has earned multiple awards, including the Bloomfield Youth Assistant Staff Recognition Award, the College Board Counselor Recognition Award, Oakland Schools' Career Practitioner Award, and has also been a Schools Counselor Association for Counselor of the Year nominee. Please join me in welcoming Marcus as our recommendation for North Hills Middle School Associate Principal.
All right. So we have a motion, and we've been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions?
Abstaining, of course, for conflict of interest.
All right. Makes sense. So motion passes successfully?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. As I stand here today, I am honored as well as humbled to be here today and excited about the new things that I have to offer the Bloomfield Hills Middle School community, as well as the students and staff in general. I'm excited, tad bit nervous, but I do look forward to work with you all, as well as the students and families within the community. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Picture.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. We'll move on to item 3B, which is the Administrative Appointment of Stephanie Barterian, Special Education Supervisor. I guess you're gonna do it, not Laura. Appreciate it.
I'll be the next three for you. Make it easy. All right, good evening.
Do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to appoint Stephanie Barterian as Special Education Supervisor with effective date of July 29, 2024.
Just a second.
Discussion, go ahead.
All right. Good evening. Proud to announce the recommendation of Ms. Stephanie Barterian as a Special Education Supervisor for Bloomfield Hills Schools. Ms. Barterian has been a member of the BH community for the last six years. She started here in 2018, and has served as a Special Education Self-contained Cross-Categorical Teacher, Special Education Design Committee Work Group Member, Special Education Extended School Year Coordinator, and Implementing Teacher, and most recently as an Instructional Coach. Ms. Barterian holds a Bachelor's of Educational Science degree from Western Michigan, a Master's of Education from the University of Phoenix, and is currently pursuing her Administration Specialist Degree from Administration and Supervision from Wayne State University. She's certified in several different areas, including K-8 All Subjects in Special Education, 68 All Subjects Elementary Education, Cognitive Impairment K-12, Learning Disabilities K-12, K-8 Language Arts General Education, and Early Childhood Education Specialists. Please join me in congratulating Stephanie Barterian, hopefully in her new position, based on your phone.
So motion has been properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? No? Motion passes successfully, 7-0. 6-0, sorry.
Just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm very excited to get started and ready to work with our students, staff, and community. So thank you for putting your trust in me. Very excited.
Thank you, appreciate it. Welcome. All right. Moving on to section 3C, which is the Administrative Appointment of, I'm sorry, Megan was here and she was supposed to-
Leslie Robleski.
Say it again for me?
Leslie Robleski.
Robleski, okay. I didn't want to screw it up, but I didn't have the prior knowledge of how to say it, so I appreciate that. Special Education Supervisor, again. Go ahead, Keith.
You know, I didn't correct. I just assumed that's the pronunciation.
We need a motion. Sorry, guys, go ahead. Somebody give me a motion, please.
I move the Board of Education appoint Leslie Robleski as Special Ed Supervisor with effective date July 29, 2024.
All right. Now, go ahead.
Proud to bring forward Leslie as a Special Education Supervisor for Bloomfield Hills Schools. She first joined Bloomfield Hills in 2021, serving as a Special Education Instructional Coach and Assistive Technology Consultant. Prior to Bloomfield, she was a Special Education Teacher at McComb ISD for 15 years. She has her Bachelor's of Science in Education with a concentration in Special Education and Cognitive Impairment, and a Master's of Arts in Education specializing in curriculum and instruction. She is expected to receive her Education Specialist Degree in Education Administration in 2025. And so I've been forth that recommendation to the Board.
Okay. Has been properly, the motion's been properly seconded. Let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please let me congratulate Ms. Robleski.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm really looking forward to getting started. I'm eager to work as part of this team and to support students, staff, and families in this different capacity and role. So thank you again.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. And last but not least, 3D is Administrative Appointment of Tara Hertzberg, Supervisor of Blumen Preschools and Kid Zone. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to appoint Tara Hertzberg as a Supervisor of Blumen Preschools and Kid Zone, with an effective date of August 12, 2024.
Second. Okay.
All right. I'm honored to bring forth the recommendation of Tara Hertzberg as the Early Childhood Supervisor of Bloomfield Hills Schools, our Blumen East and Blumen West, and currently our Blumen Central locations. She has a combined 15 years' experience in Early Childhood Education, has been a Program Director, a Lead Great Start Readiness Program Teacher for Learn Through Play Preschool, and a Lead Teacher, Science Enrichment Teacher at Norfolk Cooperative Preschool. She has run her own childhood program and is very knowledgeable about both the curriculum and the law of compliance regulations. And so we are very honored to be providing that recommendation to the Board this evening.
Great. Motion's been properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Passes 6-0.
We are very excited. Let's welcome Ms. Hertzberg.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, and I look forward to joining the family here at Bloomfield Hills Schools, and I'm very excited to get started and to get to know all of the families in this capacity. Thank you so much.
Congrats. Welcome.
Do you want to take a five-minute recess to do this?
Yeah, let's do that. That's a good idea. Yeah, we'll recess for five minutes to get some photos, so those four that were here, please come back up. All right. We are coming back, calling the meeting of July 22 for the Board of Education of Bloomfield Schools. Back to order. Moving on to item number four, the Superintendent's Report, and Bloomfield Hills School Operating Millage Renewal from Superintendent West.
Yes, good evening. I'm excited to be here finally officially in this seat, so we do have a number of updates for you. First, I just want to update the Board and the community on, you know, my first couple of weeks. We've been hard at work, just meeting a lot of people, having a lot of meetings. I was at the, I did the similar thing the chief and the fire chief did. Went to the Township Meeting, introduced our operating millage a couple of weeks ago, got to meet the Township Trustees, and I've met with Danny Walsh as well, so made those community contacts. Have met with our entire central office leadership team, district administrators. We are meeting as a district administration tomorrow, and we're having a retreat out at the farm, actually, so I'm excited to get what's currently our cabinet team together tomorrow, and we have a nice day planned. So just a lot of meetings. I will continue over the course of the next month or so, just continuing to meet a lot of people, understand perspectives of the organizational opportunities and challenges, as I've met with all of you individually and now collectively, to really understand the different perspectives and what, and how that's going to inform our pathway forward. So I'm excited about that, Matt. Just incredible people. You know, we have such good people. I knew that during the process of interviewing, and that's just been confirmed as I continue to have conversations. So excited about that, excited about the planning that's going on for the start of the 24-25 school year. A lot of that was taking place, and we're going to hone in on that over the course of the next month. You can see we're in preparation of making sure that we have a staff, administrators and such, so that's gone fantastic. My understanding, under the Superintendent's Report, I get to be an ambassador for the school district, so I'm very excited to, you know, just highlight some things that are coming up. The Marching Band Home Show is this Sunday, July 28, at 11:00 a.m. at the High School Varsity Field. The show's gonna run approximately 45 minutes, and will feature all of the work the band has put in at Band Camp, which they are actually in Toledo starting tomorrow, to develop their show for this coming year. So I also want to congratulate them on the Tri-Am National Music Honor Society for winning the Michigan State Chapter of the Year for the third year in a row, is my understanding. So Mr. Posner reached out to us and wanted to make sure that the entire community is invited to that event this Sunday. As part of my plan to engage with the community and have community events, our first one is scheduled right here on August 7 in Room D, from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. It's a coffee and conversation. It's gonna be a casual conversation. I'll be able to introduce myself, and then really, as I'm doing with all, I'm listening and learning again from the perspectives of many, so please take advantage of that opportunity. I'll also have an opportunity at the Birmingham-Bloomfield Chamber of Commerce Breakfast with the Superintendent of Birmingham, as well as myself. We'll have an opportunity to highlight the special things that are going on in our district and what may be on the horizon. That is Thursday, August 15, and it's gonna be right at North Hills Middle School. They left, but they are going to be hosting, so we'll be able to, again, share our highlights. The other social event that I want to highlight is on August 21, from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. It's an ice cream social, again, a casual conversation. Bring your families out to Wing Lake, allow the kids to play, and then, you know, I might have some short remarks, but people can get to know me, I can get to know the community, and engage in kind of just a casual way. So looking forward to those events. And then Blumen East Open House is August 27. We'll probably remind the community again at our Board Meeting on August 26, but it's important, get these events on your calendar if you can. There'll be a brief opening ceremony there, starting promptly at 7:00 p.m. So looking forward to those events as we engage throughout the rest of the summer. We are here at Booth, you know, daily, Fridays we are closed, so please reach out if you need anything. The important thing, the next important thing is just to reiterate to the community that our operating millage is on the ballot for August 6. It's, the district is asking to renew the 18 mil non-Homestead Millage and Hold Harmless Millage for a period of 20 years. This is not a new tax. It does generate about $34.3 million worth of our operating revenue, which represents about 31% of our annual budget. So it is a very critical component of our annual operations, and voters can, are urged to vote, and they can get all the information they need at bloomfield.org/vote. Again, that is on the ballot August 6. So that is it for my first Superintendent's Report.
All right. Awesome. Any questions, comments? All right. Moving on to item 5, which is the Board President's Report. President Hill obviously is not here. Just a couple of highlights that I know she would have wanted to bring up, and I'd want to bring up as well. The school board election filing deadline is coming up, which is actually tomorrow, at 4:00 p.m., so that is for the seats for the four-year terms that we're all familiar with. If anybody out there is interested and wants to do a very last-minute spur-of-the-moment decision, there is information from MASB with all kinds of information about the election process, the roles and responsibility of Board Members, how the election works, campaign finance, those kinds of things that you can certainly look into, but just so the community is aware that those, the filing deadline is tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. Wanted to also kind of touch on what you brought up. You know, that you've been working, Superintendent West, working on his night-day plan, and I appreciate, you know, we got our first Board Update since having you onboard, and quite the list of things, but a lot of things that you had accomplished since being here, so I'm excited to see all the things you're going through. Obviously, one of those being that we have a, you know, Board Governance Retreat that we're trying to work through, is having a facilitator, which has been tricky, getting that scheduled along with our schedules, I know, but we're still looking forward to that, to making sure we spend some time with new Superintendent, getting acclimated, setting up some norms and things like that. So I know that is on the horizon for President Hill to schedule. I did also want to touch on the Millage Renewal as well. I know you brought that up, but I think it's really critical for people to know. I've even gotten some questions about, you know, people ask sometimes, "Well, didn't we just have a bond, and didn't we do this?" I think it's important for people to understand that the bond from 2020, those are one-time dollars, that were, they really went towards capital improvements. You know, the construction of the new middle school, updating classrooms, security improvements, things like that, whereas, you know, all those other dollars that we get really go into the classroom, paying for salaries, paying for textbooks, and all those kinds of things. And without that, without the Millage Renewal, really, we will struggle mightily to be able to do the kinds of things we do for all the students that come into our building. So definitely want the community to know the importance of that Millage Renewal, making sure that you're aware of it, making sure that your neighbors are aware of it, what it means. It is a renewal, so we're not raising taxes. We're just doing the same thing that we've been doing, and buying ourselves some time so that in the future, we can predict what we'll need long-term. I think that was great decision-making from our Subcommittee, our Finance Subcommittee, looking at and saying, "What do we want to do?", and instead of trying to gauge what we need in the future, saying, "Let's keep what we need for now, let's take our time", and really predict what we need in the future, and then have an accurate rate for that time, really good decision-making. So just want to encourage the community to get out there, vote, spread the word, and make sure that we are successful in that effort. So that is everything from the Board President's Report. So we'll move on to item number six, which is Public Comment. And I need to take a drink of water before I read this script, otherwise I'm gonna struggle because it is the script of all scripts, so. So Public Comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It is not a time for dialogue. In the interest of time, the Open Meetings Act provides that Boards may place limits on the time allotment for an individual comment. In addition to making public comment, you may also email the Board anytime at board@bloomfield.org. Any comment that contains profanity, threats, defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or member of the Board of Education in their official capacity and related to the role and responsibilities for which they are employed or serve, or is otherwise exempt from First Amendment protection, will be excluded from Public Comment. Requests for Public Comment are assigned a number. When your number is called, please identify yourself once at the podium. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, please also identify who you represent. Thank you for taking the time to address the BHS Board of Education. We are allocating the normal three minutes. Secretary Noble, can you keep track of time for me? Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
And then we will go through, if I could have Speaker Number One come to the podium.
I did not get a number, so.
You are the correct Number One. So that worked.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Hyer, and I'm the Executive Director for West Bloomfield Parks. Thank you for allowing me to speak at the Public Comment this evening. So I first would like to remind anybody watching, or in the audience back here, that we have several volunteer opportunities available through West Bloomfield Parks, many of which your students have taken advantage of through the years, and we cannot thank you enough for allowing that and connecting them to community, because we can't run our bigger events without a large team of volunteers. And also, I'd like to acknowledge some great collaboration already with Bloomfield Hills Schools, highlighting indoor pickleball. That was a great partnership, starting last couple of years, with community education, and as well as Pine Lake Park, which hopefully I'll be back to give a bigger update on. But tonight, I'm here to share information about our August 6 bond proposal for West Bloomfield Township residents that also attends Bloomfield Hills Schools. So West Bloomfield Parks is asking West Bloomfield Township voters to consider a 20-year, $25 million bond proposal that, if approved, will provide critical support for creating a healthier community through expanded recreation programming for all ages, as well as enhanced park amenities. The bonds, the proposed bonds would provide the community with an expanded, multi-generational Connect Community Center built on the West Bloomfield Civic Center campus. The new center would feature a wider variety of recreation programs, including nature education, a dedicated lounge space for our seniors, rentable meeting and event space, a gymnasium, an indoor walking track, and more. The proposed center would be an expansion of the current Recreation Activity Center, which is currently 9,000 square feet. Once completed, it will be over 34,000 square feet. The bond would also enable West Bloomfield Parks to make needed investments to other parks within the township, including Pine Lake Park, Blumer, and Marsh Bank Parks doing playground renovations, as well as the replacement of the paved walking trail at Marsh Bank Park. And lastly, an expanded pickleball complex at Drake Sports Park. If the bond is approved, a resident of West Bloomfield Township whose home has a taxable value of $100,000 would be assessed approximately $35 a year. If approved, work on the new Connect Community Center would begin in early 2025, with an anticipated late opening in '26 or early '27. We encourage voters to find more information at wbparks.org/bonds. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Speaker Number Two.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the Board, Superintendent, and those watching at home in Administration. My name is Scott Warrow. I represent and work for the Michigan Education Association, and represent six bargaining units, which you employ, representing about 750 of your employees. I'd first like to congratulate Mr. West on his job here in his first two weeks, and we look forward to meeting with you, and are very glad that you're here. There are two things that I want to talk about. First, indeed relates to the Bloomfield Hills Association of Educational Interpreters and Interveners. Try saying that real fast a couple of times. You will be voting, hopefully, in the affirmative 6 to 0 on the collective bargaining agreement presented to you tonight. It was a very collaborative arrangement of seven sessions that usually last two to four hours. Two of my bargaining folks are back here, the current President, Tammy Misrack, and Deb Gordon. Lisa Rowe is also part of that. And we were very cooperatively with Jordan Harris, who works for Collins and Blaha, Stacy Wiggton, who's the new HR manager, and Laura Boca, who is your new Special Education Director. Produced a collective bargaining agreement, which was widely supported by our membership last week, and it included changes in contract language, will help better serve these students that they serve, and as well as expanding their schedule of wages, making it competitive throughout the year, so they no longer have to go through two weeks of a holiday unpaid. Just if you're not familiar, or those of you at home or not, these 21 employees work with about 60 DH8 students in three of our buildings, East Over, North Hills, and the high school. They travel around with those students as they interpret, and in some cases, those students that are blind help guide them through their learning, and they need to know a lot of different curriculums, because they need to develop that sign language on the fly. So they are hardworking, well-credentialed people, and we thank you for your time and your consideration of the contract. The second item I'd like to talk about is one contract that we have not yet settled. You have 121 paraprofessionals who are currently working under an expired contract. Many of them do work over the summer in the extended year, school year program. We've had 11 sessions with that group, lasting about two to four hours. We do work closer on contract language. We've been working with five of our members, and the district has 10 people representing their side. We have another session tomorrow. We are closer with finances than we were a couple of weeks ago, so that is good news. We hope that we can meet in the middle. These are hardworking employees who want to continue their job and their role here servicing your students, and I know you were sent a report recently by the President indicating the support they have amongst the teachers, and we appreciate that and hope that you be supportive of that agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And Speaker Number Three.
My name is Andrew
My name is Andrew Pass, and I'm the founder of an educational content development company. And I've had great communication with Mr. Bidlack, but I come to numerous school board meetings across the Midwest. And even though I deal with the administration, I'd like to introduce myself to the boards as well. Our company really works with local school districts to develop content in which the students see themselves and the teachers see themselves because they have ideas and thoughts and experience that's incorporated in. Why is that important? Why do we do this? Because my own son, who's now 29, is probably the smartest person that I know. And he dropped out of high school. The reason he dropped out of high school is because he just wasn't engaged and didn't like doing it. Got into drugs and was close to death on several occasions. Now fortunately, at 29, he's leading a great life. But too many of our kids fall through those cracks. They don't see themselves in the content, in the teaching. And the teachers are so busy developing curriculum, doing other things, that we're often denying them the core of their job, which is developing the great relationships with the students. And so we like working with school districts to help them develop content that places their students at the center and their teachers at the center, so that the Michaels and everybody else who's going through the program sees that they can be empowered, they are empowered, and they become self-fulfilling individuals who can make positive contributions to society. So I know we're not going to be in a discussion, but I just like emphasizing that important element. And you guys wouldn't be on the board if you didn't recognize the urgency in it. So I know we're all on the same page, which gives me great excitement and share the passion with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. No other public comments. We will move to item number seven, which is our consent agenda, 7A. Trustee Noble.
All right. Well, is everyone ready to vote again? Because we're going to vote on this.
We're ready.
All right. I move the Board of Education to approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as presented. Do I get a second?
Support.
Okay.
I'm sorry for that.
That's all right. So just to be clear, we are doing the same thing we did before, consolidating B, C, D into one.
That's correct.
A, B, C, D in one motion. Okay. Got it.
So we're voting on A, B, C, and D.
Yep. Okay. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes, any abstentions?
I abstain due to conflict of interest.
All right. Motion passes successfully. 501, is that how it scored?
Yeah. You can make the rules somewhat.
All right. Great. All right. Moving on to item eight, Board Business, 8A, which is ratification of the contract for the Bloomfield Hills Association of Educational Interpretors and Interveners. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the contract with the Bloomfield Hills Association of Educational Interpretors and Interveners as presented.
Second. Okay. Keith?
All right. Jordan Harris, who is our interim Assistant Superintendent of HR, led a team for the district. And Scott Worrell, as he mentioned, led a team of interpreters and interveners. And over the course of multiple sessions through the negotiation process, they were able to settle on a contract which met the needs of both parties. As Mr. Worrell indicated, the association has already reviewed and voted on that contract and has ratified it within their group. And tonight, you have been presented with the summary of that contract, as well as the recommendation to approve.
All right. Any other discussion? Good to go. All right. All those in favor? All right.
Do you get a question?
Yes.
Yes.
What was it?
Can the district afford the contract? The one important question.
Yeah. Yeah. Fair. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes six oh.
Depends on August 6th, right? All right. I just want to quickly thank Jordan and Scott and all of their team members for their work on this. Like Scott said, Jordan echoed the same comments. It was a very collaborative process, and I appreciate all their efforts.
Glad to hear it. Thank you.
Moving on to item 8B, Request To Award Bid For Broadcast Systems. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to award Key Code Media Inc. for the equipment installation and commissioning of the board broadcast system in the amount of $240,865.46 to be paid from the 2020 bond fund as presented.
Second. Okay. Any discussion?
Well, I guess, just for the community, right. So can you just elaborate a little bit more about what this is, why is it needed, Dave?
Absolutely. This is nothing sexy. So for technology, this is.
I never said it was.
Routers and switchers and these things that move our video signals around our district for the most part. And I'm just kind of, right now, we're having a little technical difficulty, so I've been running around trying to fix that. And some of our stuff is upwards of 22 years old. So this is, we get a long life in most of these products, but they, they're a significant investment in the district and what we do.
So after this, where will we stand in terms of kind of standardization throughout the district of buildings?
So this, so this is really just upgrading that infrastructure there. So in terms of standardization or capabilities, it'll allow us to have better capabilities at our middle schools, which was all part of the bond project, and this is part of that bond work. And so we'll have, we'll be able to, say, for example, if we had an event at the new North Hills Auditorium or something, we'd be able to now tap into our video systems. We'd be able to stream those, produce those. And as you all recall and the community knows, our broadcast system, so when we think about even a board meeting tonight, this is part of our student lab experience as well. And so these are, these are classrooms. And while most of this is engineering and equipment that they don't touch, this actually supports that work and effort that we do in those programs across the district and for the community to see into what we're doing. So to answer, just to kind of sum that up, what it allows us to do is start connecting those buildings to the larger video system that we installed a little over 15 years ago.
Right. Okay. Awesome. So theoretically, we could easily have a board meeting in a different location without...
Yeah, that's a longer discussion.
Yeah. All right. Never mind.
As you guys have experienced that, when you move to those other things, those aren't all set up for, for the convenience of that. In addition, I think it's important to know, this is phase one of phase three. And so there's more work to come along here. And then we're moving into the high school design and technology for those classrooms as well.
Okay. Awesome. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Seven.
So Dave, so yeah, this phase one is for 240K. What is it for phase two and three?
Yeah. So I think, so I think it comes out total, I think about 500, 550 grand total for these, these systems, which includes the high school, the radio stations like a phase three, we're moving them to an IP-based. And then the other one is booth center here. This stuff that you're in front of was installed in 2012, and it is, you know, fighting its life cycle.
Got it. And what is a typical replacement cycle for these kinds of equipment?
Yeah, roughly between eight to 15 years, depending on the product. And so some of these things, like in this thing here, I would, I would expect a minimum of a decade, and then likely, more likely, in that 12 to 15 years for most of the stuff that's purchased here.
And we're confident that this investment will have a life of 10-plus years.
Yeah. I mean, we, in my experience with this, we have never, all of the, so some of the stuff is 22 years old that we're replacing. We literally have that kind of longevity with it. Because these are, much of this is, think about it, this is what your, your broadcast stations, ESPN, they're all doing this. They have to run 24/7 all year long. And having that redundancy and capability, these are the kind of systems that we're installing. And so you will have longevity with it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Okay. Moving on to item 8C, which is the second reading and adoption of board policy updates. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the changes to the board policy as recommended by legal counsel as presented. Is there a second? Okay.
All right. Just as a reminder, we reviewed these and did our first reading in a prior meeting. You were provided with a Google Doc in which we had a few questions. We sent those to the Policy Services. You were received, you had received written response to those questions. And today, our objective was to review and ratify, or excuse me, review and vote on these changes to policy.
Yeah. I appreciate the responses for the questions. Sorry, I'm trying to pull up. I, I still, you know, I was curious on one of them surrounding AI. I think it's still, you know, I know their response was kind of basically, no other school districts, it sounded like, had entered into that territory yet, right? So at a K through 12 level. But I know that at a higher level, right, at the collegiate level, they certainly are. So I don't know if that's going to start seeping down into the K through 12 level or not.
So we got two pieces here, too. One, it's policy, and they are constantly reviewing this policy.
Right.
I anticipate that we will continue to see some AI-type policy changes in the future as that whole arena changes.
Yeah.
The other part of this is we do have administrative regulations. So we can put in our own AR, too, around that regarding what are the approved tools and whatnot.
Yeah. I think it's, it's worth at least, maybe, not right now, but maybe in one of the subcommittees, maybe in hours, I guess, to start talking about what that would look like. Because I do think that it's going to be inevitable, that we have to at least acknowledge that, okay, the tools are there, they're being utilized, right? And we, and it can't be a simple on-off switch, right? So we have to figure out how to enable students to use the tools successfully in a positive way without, you know, and try to maintain some semblance of a good desired outcome rather than what we've seen at the collegiate levels, which is, it's very, for both sides, both at the administrative side and the student side, it's difficult to navigate, so.
It's my understanding, Keith or Ted might know more about this, there's a work group, or there was an Oakland County work group. I know Birmingham has, has coalesced around this, too. And so there's countywide discussions about what this is going to look like. And I believe our tech integration specialists are leading the effort as it relates to what it looks like in our classrooms. So I'll look forward to engaging with that group and just as you said, you know, finding out what it means for us and how we go forward. But from a policy standpoint, I think having statements or whatever of the board's direction of what's tolerable and what's not is, is the appropriate measure at this point. Miller Johnson obviously represents a number of different clients, so they're engaging in this conversation statewide. So I look forward to what our working group is, is going to come up with and what the parameters are that we, we put in place and then inform the board of that process.
So we've got tech, what did you call the?
Tech integration specialists.
Okay. Are there teachers involved in? Okay.
Yes. There are teachers involved, too, but they are cert, both of them are certified teachers.
Okay. Perfect. I just want to make sure that, because the teacher's obviously boots on the ground dealing with that and having to sometimes make a decision about, was this generated or derivative of artificial intelligence? Is this natural work? You know, that gets challenging. So I am interested in seeing how that plays out and how we get involved. Other than that, I, you know, it was, everything else was straightforward. I thought it was just a good discussion point for us to bring up because we hadn't brought it up before.
Our tech's working well enough. Dave was able to hear this conversation over there.
I was.
That's kind of scary.
He was with him.
Next time, we just have to have your response coming from on top of all. Right.
So Dave does oversee the tech integration specialists as part of his team, so.
Yeah. And so we, we've been working for, so if you think about, we're a month, I think we're a month 26, 28 or so of generative AI in our, kind of our workspace. And we've been working with a group, particularly at the secondary level. And so we have a number of stakeholders, both from teachers, we have a pilot group, a cohort there that has been working on this. We have our administrators as well. This fall, we'll be rolling out a roadmap of what that looks like and how we're going to support that. Moreover, we'll also have engagements with our community. So our families, they're going to have questions about this. So how, as a parent, do I navigate, is this right or wrong? Or how should I do this? Or how can I leverage this? I think the key takeaway for our district is, we're committed to teaching these skills because they're going to be required and important to the work as they move forward in their careers in life.
That's great. I mean, it's seeping into the workplace. It's appearing on people's laptops, especially, you know, like when organizations kind of let updates happen, all of a sudden, they're like, what's this AI tool? And it's asking me to give it information, and then there's questions about privacy, there's questions about the integrity of the work. So it's, it's kind of hitting everybody all at once. And, you know, obviously, we don't want to be behind, be behind the curve. We want to stay in front of it. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're doing that. Sounds like.
Absolutely. And you know, privacy is one of our most critical factors around this. Because our kiddos, we may not know some of the things that might affect them around data and privacy and security. And so the, when we think about some of those non-negotiables, that's one of those spaces where, hey, if it's a gray area, we're, we're going to be very conservative around that. We want to protect that.
Is there a specific tool we're looking at now?
Yes. So we, we have a wide variety, matter of fact. And I'm happy to, in a kind of a later time, we can actually get into a little bit deeper. But there, we're going to be piloting one at the secondary level coming this fall.
Okay.
We got a kind of grant money that we're going to be working through. And we have a variety of other ones where they're add-ons to what our current platforms are. And so we're kind of exploring those. Again, most of us are just figuring this out for the first time. And so we're going to, I think this year will be a lot of getting our staff using it. And then as we probably, if everything was going great as we got into that second semester, then we start engaging those students. What does that look like? And in the following fall, I think we'll have much more robust. That would be kind of the goal or thinking around it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? John?
Well, with regard to the policy, I, I just, this is more of a policy formation question. Throughout the document, there's highlighted portions where we're supposed to fill in information. Is there a timeline for how that happens? I don't recall those items being left uncompleted when we were voting on it, but maybe they were in the past, so.
It's a fair question.
There's a, there's a number of yellow highlighted items. Right. Their positions are.
And then there's the AI pieces that will work with the.
I missed the, the first part.
There are yellow fields because this goes out to everyone.
Right.
And so we put in the names or titles of positions or whatever it requires after